That the students from Youth Together are very interested in the item related to the draft Local Accountability Plan Policy and would like to be able to listen to the Board's discussion on that. And I know it's part of, it was agendized as part of the study session. Staff, actually, we were not going to really address that particular policy in our presentation for the study session, but the students have been patiently waiting rather than having them wait for another half an hour or 45 minutes. If the Board is okay with taking that draft policy, it is not on the agenda for action tonight. It is on the agenda for a discussion. But if the Board is okay with that, we would recommend that that part of the agenda be moved up.
All right. Any issues with that?
No.
Let's give the young people their window. So we'll now move into study session, Item K, the Local Control Accountability Plan.
Or you can do the public hearing on it.
You know what? Is this for the public hearing as well as the study session item?
No, just for the draft.
So just for K?
Yeah, LCAP policy.
Okay, so we're gonna actually just move an Item K up with this piece specifically. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. So tonight we have before you the Youth Together team that is at Emory Secondary School, and they will present, they are going to present a policy they would like the Board to consider for adoption, not at tonight, but at a later date. And so the information, the policy that they have is written in user-friendly language in terms, from a perspective of students, because they want to share their authentic voice in terms of young people. So each one of our members, they'll come before you, introduce themselves, and then they will give you more information about the policy.
Good evening, school board staff and community. My name is Tamara Dancy. I'm a lead student organizer at Youth Together, also a student at Emory Secondary School. Standing beside me are my colleagues, Corinne Titus, Justice Perkins, Aliyah Hardman, Bria Williams, and Bianca Onique Wery. Unfortunately, two of our LSOs, Aliyah Muhammad and Samara Alka, couldn't be here tonight. Today, we were joined by Oakland Schools, Skyline, Casamont, Fremont, and students from Richmond, and Cali Family for Justice. Today, we will be presenting a policy of student engagement at EUSD. Thank you.
Good evening, students, teachers, staff, and Board members. My name is Bria Williams-Moller, and I am a student athlete at Emory High School and a lead student organizer at Youth Together. I am here to talk to you about what we did this year around the LCAP at both Emory High School and Youth Together. This year, we had Unity Day and Unity Week. During Unity Day, we held LCAP workshops/focus groups all day for every single class. Then, we, these workshops that we did were, these workshops/focus groups were to present, were to present student needs to, presentation to the school board, and student needs were, and also to make sure that the student needs were met and changes that they felt needed to change within our school. For Unity Day, we did that exact same thing, but also increased student involvement and participation, and increased awareness of the Local Control and Accountability Plan, and also the Local Control Funding Formula. During that week, we embraced awareness and equality through different ethnic days celebrating each ethnicity that we have in our school, bonding a little closer for a better understanding of where we all came from besides notifying that the fact that we are all students of Emory High School. Today, we are here to present our policy on how we feel students should be more involved around the Local Control and Accountability Plan, or LCAP.
Good afternoon. My name is Aliyah Hardman. I am a lead student organizer at Youth Together, and I just completed my sophomore year at Emory Secondary School. Today, I will be speaking on what we as a group have learned while working around the LCAP, and also why we want this policy passed. The first thing we've learned is our reach from the time we sacrificed our morning handing out flyers for the parent forum that happened in March, and also how the school budgets the money, and how the LCFF prioritizes low-income students, foster care students, and English language learners. But most importantly, we've learned that we need more student engagement in order for our voices to be heard, because the students are the ones who generate the money in our district. We want this policy to be passed so we can have student engagement, because we deserve to have a voice within our district, and also because we know that the school invests in us, so we can invest in our education. But most importantly, we want this policy passed, because when we partner with the district, some of the needs expressed from the student surveys was included in the LCAP process. We want this policy passed, not just for this year, but every year in the future.
Hello, my name is Corinne Titus, and I am also a sophomore at Emory High School and a leader student organizer at Youth Together. As you have previously been informed, we have been trying to get a policy approved. A group of my colleagues have devoted a large amount of our time creating this policy, and with the support of Ms. Allen, we have also been doing tasks to influence the growth of our school. One of those tasks is working on the policy which is involving student engagement, and those policies are, one, to have equal representation in LCAP committees. A, all LCAP meetings shall take place during student and parent-friendly hours to ensure maximum attendance. B, 10 students shall participate in a student advisory board. There will be two representatives per grade, eighth through 12. C, students shall receive a meeting reminder 72 hours before meeting day. D, two students shall be appointed to each LCAP special committee.
Good evening, my name is Bianca Onique Wery, and I'm gonna continue on reading the policy. Two, to be provided with accurate information and budget figures. A, all materials are in simplified student-friendly language. Materials for meeting will be available 72 hours before the meeting. B, materials shall include visual aids and graphics. C, student advisory board will receive skill-based workshops/study sessions, for example, how to read budgets in LCAP 101. D, student advisory board will maintain bulletin board in public space that is dedicated to LCAP updates. E, information will be distributed to the student body using social media. Three, to be actively involved in the decision-making process with voting privileges. A, student advisory board will give the LCAP a thumbs up or thumbs down on behalf of the student body, and the feedback will be considered. B, students on LCAP committees shall have voting power. C, adult allies on LCAP committees shall make space for student voice. D, student advisory board members shall conduct five workshops/focus groups each year that solicits feedback from the student body and will help coordinate two parents' forms. D1, student advisory board shall receive facilitation and participatory research training to prepare for facilitating workshops. Focus groups and surveys for the student body shall present data to decision-making entities for consideration. D2, data shall be collected from 50 percent of the population, eighth through 12th graders. And lastly, E, student advisory board shall participate in crafting evaluation tools and conduct evaluations.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Justice Perkins, and I am a student at Emoryville High School. Today, we are demanding that you pass a policy that mandates student engagement around LCAP budgeting decisions, and that you revisit this policy before we become a community school. That is all. We are now open for questions.
Well, thank you all for making that presentation. I think this is very valuable to us, and to know that crafted by the students for the students and for the benefit of the whole is quite phenomenal. So I just wanted to send that note to you. Any questions from Board members to our students, our student leaders?
First of all, excellent job. I'm really impressed by this. This is, this is great. My only question is, what are parent and student friendly times? When do you want the meetings?
Can you please repeat the question?
Certainly. I just wanna know, what times do you want the meetings? What are parent and student friendly times?
I think student, parent and student friendly times are, because a lot of parents, we wanna consider the times that parents get off works, because a lot of parents go to works. So, in my opinion, student and parent friendly times are around 4:30 to 5:00.
Thank you.
What, again, I'm really impressed with the work and appreciate all the great thought you guys have put into this, coming together, and Ms. Allen for her role in helping support you in doing this. When you say in one D, "Two students shall be appointed to each LCAP special committee," can you define for me what you mean by special committee? And I mean, the kinds of committees that were required to convene or consult are two, in particular, that come to mind, the Parent Advisory Committee and the D-LAC, the District English Learner Advisory Committee, which has a, the D-LAC in particular, it's a very set population that is in statute. And school site councils, we've incorporated their thinking in our LCAP, and there is room for students on that, again, according to statute. So, or are you talking about some other ad hoc committees that might get formed over time?
So we're talking about some existing committees where it makes sense, and then committees that may develop over time. We didn't wanna really specify it, because the LCAP is in a brand-new space, and so we know that it, how those committees work may change as folks get used to writing it. The other thing is, raise your hand if you're on the SEC. So we have three of our members on the SEC, and we won't, and it was because we made a request to be on it, and we just want it mandated that young people get a seat on the SEC. We also think that it's important to have space on the D-LAC, even if it's not to have voting power, because that's one of the spaces that the state mandated, and so we wanna be in every space possible, giving feedback where it makes sense.
Have you reached out and talked to the D-LAC chairs and the, I guess, the parents who are on the Parent Advisory Committee might be, I mean, they may welcome having students come and participate in the meetings, as you say.
So I've spoken with the, a couple of parents on the Parent Advisory Committee, and I know that they would be open, but I think this is not just a question of would they be open, it's that they have to be open. Like, we, a lot of the work that we've done at Emory this year, which is, I was saying yesterday, which is quite remarkable, we're the only, one of the only districts in the state that managed to craft a model for student engagement, and now has the opportunity to make a groundbreaking decision by passing a policy on what we crafted. And so I think that it's really important that we are mandating that we have spaces in different places, that we have the opportunity to do that, and that other districts can say, you know what, we haven't figured out the student engagement thing, but Emory, the District of Emory has, and let's see what model they created. Let's see if we can replicate that. And so we had a press conference earlier, because there was press, and people all over the country who want to run this story, who wanna tell the story of these young people who are taking time to, to make student engagement really meaningful, not just for the sake of talk, but actually in action.
I love when students come to the podium and public speaking. I love to hear student voices. I love to, I love to see students involved. Personally, I have no problem supporting, you know, your policy. I have no problem supporting students being on any committee. But the thing about policy for me is that if the Board implements a policy, especially around student voice and student engagement, I wanna see that policy come to fruition. I wanna see that policy sustainable, and I wanna see some results from that policy. And for that to happen, you know, students need an organization or adults to help you with that. And, you know, I know you all are, you know, okay with that. But yesterday, I heard Youth Together, as well as the other organizations, say that they don't know where they're standing with the district as far as their work for the following year. So my question is not to you all, because I'll support anything you want. My question is to the district, and what's their commitment to seeing that this policy is taken, and is sustainable, and it really happens? So, and hopefully, I put that out there now, so when we talk about LCAP, staff can inform the Board, how do we plan on, if we pass this policy, sustaining it, and how will either an adult, a staff adult, or an organization will support you and your efforts for your voices to be heard? So that's, that's my question, and that's kinda where I stand. But, you know, I support you all.
So I just, I just wanna answer a little bit to the question you just posed. The policy is not dependent on an organization to do it. The policy is like any other policy that you would have in your Board policies, that if student engagement, it's mandatory that student engagement happens. It's mandatory that students have to be on the school site council. It should be mandatory that students are a part of D-LAC. It's mandatory that students are a part of certain committees, so we just need to add some more committees. But if we have a Common Core Steering Committee, if there are other committees that are formed, then as a Board or as a district, what the youth are stating is that they just wanna make sure that they're at the table when we make decisions. And so it's not incumbent upon, an organization, Youth Together is awesome, and we've been blessed to even have them here and to have them present. However, if Youth Together went away, if I left, if we didn't, if none of you were Board members, would we still have a policy that would ensure that students would have a voice when it comes to decision-making, in terms of the actions that actually impact their lives?
So who would be the staff person that would work with the students to make sure that they get on committees, that they are prepared, and that they can work with the adults in these various committees?
Well, in most of your Board policies, it states superintendent or designee. So it starts with the superintendent. And when the superintendent will establish a designee, whether it be a district person or principal or a teacher that they're paying on a stipend, but it starts with that, with the role of the superintendent. And that's what most of the Board policies state, superintendent or designee.
Okay. I think the other thing I'd point out is, as I look at this draft policy, and I think it's very well put together, well thought out, is that within the structures the district establishes, that the policy would ensure that students are included in the process. So while there are, as Ms. Allen stated, there may be some unique situations where a staff person would have to bring the student advisory board together, whether it's to help them think through a particular issue, or to get their input as advisory board, I think that the policy, and, you know, I think there are many different ways in which the actual Board policy statement could be written, but I think the important thing is that the policy puts the district out there, and its policy that commits to ensuring that there is student voice and student engagement. So whether it's, we had two students that came for the first COC meeting, they were incredible. The rest of the COC was very impressed with their input. Whether it's, Ms. Allen said, D-LAC committee, or any other kinds of committees that are formed relative to the implementation of LCAP, to ensure that our policy says students are involved. And so while there may be some staff time and work that would need to be put into this, I think that, you know, it's the old statement about release of responsibilities, and you wanna provide students with the capacity, develop student leadership skills, so that they then can sustain much of that involvement work as well. So if it's the Board's pleasure, we would certainly try to incorporate the elements of what has been drafted here into the typical Board policy type of structure. Ms. Tamara and I were just kinda looking at this policy, and I think we have a little bit of a, kind of a framework for how we can incorporate many of the ideas. Some of it is we're gonna have to, you know, talk about and work out, but I think it would not be that complicated to draft a Board policy for the Board's consideration.
And I would hope we would have an administrative reg to implement the policy as well.
We've already drafted out the structure for a Board policy statement and administrative regulations.
Okay. I mean, like I said, I have, yeah, and like I said, I have no problem, you know, supporting a policy for student voice. I advocate for that. So, but again, my concern is to make sure that those students have, have a voice, and someone is leading them in that endeavor.
So, can I follow up on that, unless you had something directly on it? Yeah, I share the same sentiment that, and in particular, there are two pieces of this that do call on someone on staff, Ms. Allen or us, to provide some capacity. It seems that the Student Advisory Board will receive skills-based workshop study sessions, for example, how to read budgets in LCAP 101, and then later, there's a piece on, "Student Advisory Board Shall Receive Facilitation, Participatory, Resource Training to Prepare for Facilitating Workshops, Focus Groups." Those are really great points. That is gonna fall, it seems, to the district staff, or somehow, we're gonna have to help, you know, with that training and workshop. Now, I can, I can commit pro bono public advocates to provide the LCAP 101 training to students. We'd be very excited to do that. But there are other pieces here, and so I guess it's a question for you, Ms. Allen. Have you thought about how to facilitate getting the students a kinda training if, in fact, we adopt a policy like that?
So usually start again with superintendent or their designee, and whoever the designee is, or whether it be the superintendent, or whether it be CBO, or principal, et cetera, it's their responsibility to do that. That's what we do all day. We're all educators. So it's not necessarily difficult to train youth. That's what we do. We know what it takes to engage youth. So I think it's not as, I think that's where it would stop. If we have an organization that would love to come in and help support, then we would request, or we would request for that organization to do that, or we may partner with an organization. However, what we want in the policy, though, is to make sure that it's incumbent upon the staff that is within the district to do the work versus depending on someone else to come in and do it for us. I hope that answered it.
And do you think that is reasonably possible, given, you know, all the other things the staff are doing?
Well, we did it this year. There's, basically, with the exception of having, making sure that all of them are on particular committees, because this is the first time that we've gone through with meeting a lot of stakeholders during the LCAP, the workshops already happened. I already met, like, I met with the, with the team, and so any questions that they didn't, that they had, I clarified it for them. I think they also had a chance, you all did a town hall with Mr. Chauvin before, or something like that? They had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Chauvin. So the, the students themselves will actually request the staff person that they want to come and speak to them. So it would be my hope that we would not have any staff members who would not show up before our youth. So every time they made a request for someone to come, that person came, presented, answered questions, clarified. Again, the goal was to incorporate as much language in the LCAP. If it wasn't in there, I explained why it wasn't in there, or that it already existed. So I think it would be, it would be part of what we should do anyway with children, engage. That's why, that's why we come to work every day, is to actually engage with you.
But who's gonna lead and who's gonna instruct? What I heard you say is that, you know, they request for presenters to come, and they came. But who's gonna actually be the one who instructs them and teaches them from the staff?
So again, you have your-
And you said, "We did it this year." So who did, who did it from staff this year?
I basically did it from staff, myself. I did, well, I did almost the whole, everything this year, to be quite honest. I met with all the stakeholders, almost by myself, so hopefully next year, that won't be the case.
I mean, from the student standpoint, who trained and who instructed students this year for the work that they've done?
So Celeste was, yes, Celeste was a part of, Celeste did a lot, because we had a leadership class. So in the leadership class, even having the class that's there, that's helped a lot. So in terms of supporting her district-wide, Ms. Collins was a support, and I supported her, so, and Mr. Chauvin did. So I think in the policy, what you all are looking for is you want to identify a person or role, but when you look at most of your ARs or your VPs, you first state a superintendent or their designee. They're not specified in terms of which person will take, carry out a policy.
I think we understand that, but I think we also know that the superintendent won't be the one doing it. And I think from the Board perspective, we just want to get a feel on what staffer would be the one that would be leading the effort.
Well, just so, just to, I think got it clear. The only, the only thing I wanted to add is that I know from the city school, or there's been a number of conversations, so I think this really is well-placed or well-timed, because I think the intent from any organization, that from city schools to COC, I'm just trying to think of all the different, definitely the Board, but there's so many different groups that we absolutely want student voice, so this is just, for me, this is another appropriate place for that to happen, and it's well-done, that it's stated in writing. So I do appreciate seeing something in writing, because it may, it actually makes me think, do we need to, I thought in city school, we might've had a policy, I'm just trying to, I think that group, so it's just making sure we are, you know, saying what we, you know, saying what our expectations are and making sure it's documented. So I think I really appreciate having this document live and breathe.
Thank you.
So what do we do for next steps? Do we need to, back on the 25th?
Yeah, I think the Board's questions and concerns are appropriate. I think what staff would like is direction. If the Board believes that this concept is important, we need to move forward with it, I think you should leave it to staff to work with them, to come up with a Board policy and administrative regulations, and staff will come back to you with a specific plan for how some of those logistical issues that you have brought up can be addressed. I think there are a number of different options. Obviously, in terms of the earlier conversation about bandwidth, that's always a concern here, you know, I mean, how many new things can we do? But I think that this is one of those things that will make, is part of the hallmark and legacy of this district. We really wanna be a district in which student voice is really important. That's the kinda thing that you get out there, that's the kinda thing that's gonna make students wanna come to our schools, that's the kinda thing that builds student leadership, that's, those are the kinds of things that lead to a graduation like last Monday, where our students, you know, as a class have done extremely well. That's all part of the experience that we wanna provide here. So I would, if the Board nods their head and gives us direction, staff will work on a policy and work with them to develop it and put in policy kind of language. This is really a great start, and we'll bring that back to you as soon as we, as soon as possible.
Can I also add that we'd include the authors to make sure we have those authors that are labeled here on that, on that policy as well? Any other comments?
Yeah, one more comment. You know, it's LCAP this year, and it'll probably be LCAP for a few more years, but I'd like to see some other language, so it addresses whatever we call it in the next cycle, 'cause it won't be LCAP, it'll be something new.
No, I think the thinking would be develop a policy that kinda goes beyond LCAP.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, thank you for that. We want a policy, a general student engagement policy, but we still want something specific to the LCAP. And the other thing that I wanted to say was that Youth Together definitely was a resource this year, in coming up with like curricula and doing the trainings and things like that, but they say the way that you know that you've done good is if you work yourself out of a job. So we wanna definitely institutionalize this, and there are different models. Oakland, Youth Together actually helped Oakland create a whole department called the Meaningful Student Engagement, Meaningful Student Engagement in Oakland, for Oakland District, which is a huge district, and we would manage to do that there and institutionalize it there. And so we would definitely be down to partner with you guys, but the point is, I love Emory, and, but the point is for me, is not about Youth Together, the point is for this to be institutionalized for the long haul. And we definitely have the- And we definitely have the skills and the tools to help to make sure that that happens.
And that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Great job, students. I appreciate it.
So, you got a nod?
Yeah. Powerful, powerful students of Emory. Oh, okay, sorry. Before you go, public, thank you. You know, it's not on my tattoo today, but opportunity for members of the public now to address this particular topic. And if so, if you don't mind just coming up to the microphone.
You got to, you got to be on the microphone, Doc.
Thank you.
You want to speak first?
Just take your time.
Okay. Go ahead and I'll...
Take your time.
How you doing? My name is Karis Titus and I'm a parent of Emeryville High School. So, I sit in a meeting and I listen to you guys. You talk budget plans and all this stuff, but what I really heard was that you guys are trying to figure out why the students are not enrolling as much as they should. And another thing that I like to state is that I just can't get why there's less resources going to the high school students and more going to the elementary. Now, you were sitting here talking about a solution. This is your solution right here. Beautiful kids like this who's trying to do something after school, putting in a hundred percent. This is your solution right here. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you because you almost took the words out of my mouth about that. I cannot think of a better way to institutionalize, I love that word, to institutionalize the belief because the policy is about the belief that you have as a board, not micromanaging, sorry, but not micromanaging the how, but the belief deeply that our students are valued, that are at the center, and I cannot think of a better way to start with that business of really making Emory High School the kind of school even more than it has been growing. And if you want to increase student enrollment, attract students, what better way than through having the word of mouth from parents and students that this is a place where we're heard? So, think about, you are sending the message of what do you believe really by saying yes to a policy like that and then saying, yes, and staff, we believe in you that you'll figure out how to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, oh, please, you got to come to the microphone.
Exactly.
Hi, good evening. My name's Akia Jackson. I'm the executive director for Youth Together and I just wanted to say a few things. The first thing is I wanted to thank you because in our experience doing this work specifically just this year around the LCAP engagement and LCFF policy, your willingness to really put your money where your mouth is around the belief in students and the power of their voices is definitely something precious and not to be taken for granted. In this work, you know, having other superintendents and school board members intimidate students and really make it very tough for young people to be at the table for these decisions, I just wanted to know, I want you to know that I don't take it for granted. It's not something that is the norm. The second thing I wanted to just reiterate is that Youth Together is for sure, shares the same concern around implementation and wanting to make sure that the district has the capacity to have this be a policy that lives because we have also had the experience of passing policy and then no implementation, no follow-through.
That was my whole point.
Yeah, so, I just wanted you to lift that up because I heard that and I share that saying. But also, just to reiterate that it's definitely not about Youth Together, but just, you know, just making sure that the students in the district have the resources that they need and the whole district really to be partners. So, I just wanted to say that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, any other public comment to this particular item? All right, so I think at this time, we're actually going to move into, are we moving into closed session?
Madam Chair, can I just clarify? We're not, but we're not done with the LCAP information item.
But we do want to reset our closed session. Is that correct? Correct. That's it.